Let's know when we're good. Okay, I will call the meeting to order. Uh, welcome everyone to our Williamsport City Council meeting. It's Thursday, March twenty eighth. We're in Trade and Transit two third floor. Please rise for the invocation by Councilman Vince Pelizzi, followed by the flag salute and roll call.
Lord, tonight we ask you for your wisdom as we continue to be faced with tough decisions. Help us to carefully consider all the information and the options that have been put before us. Help us to be unified in making the best possible decisions for our city, our people and ourselves. Help us to effectively carry them out. Your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call the roll. Mr. Mackey.
Here.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Allison is not present. Mrs. Katz.
Here.
Miss Mealy is not present and Mr. Byder.
Here.
Mr. Yoder here. We have four of five for the record. Um, item four, limited courtesy to the floor. Um, we've had no requests tonight that I'm aware of. Um, item five, uh, we've got a resolution approving submission of a grant application to DCNR for Youngswood Park Improvement Project. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. I will welcome Ms. Fessler to the podium for the first time. Welcome aboard and welcome this evening.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Good evening, members of council. For your consideration is a resolution authorizing submission of a grant to DCNR. If funded, this grant would support the revitalization of Youngs Woods Park, including the following upgrades. Removing a pavilion and replacing it with a new pavilion, picnic tables, trash cans, all-inclusive playground equipment, parking lot paving. Removal of old and replacement of new fencing, walking trail, senior exercise amenities, bike racks, removing of existing installation of new sidewalks, benches. A rain garden and a pickleball court. The expected project cost is over six hundred thousand dollars. Funds are being sought through the DCNR Land and Water Conservation Fund, which has a project minimum of six hundred thousand dollars. This grant requires a fifty percent match that is being sought through productive conversations with a local grant making foundation. Matching funds could also be secured through the state's GTRP Greenway Trail Recreation Program funding. If this project match funds are not secured, the scope of the project would decrease, or we would break the project into phases in order to complete it.
Very cool. Um, this was reviewed in finance, Mr. Byder. Do you mind covering finance this evening?
Uh, no, one of the biggest questions that we had was what would be the scope of the project if we were not able to receive, uh, one or the other grants, uh, and that was touched upon. Um, glad to see that it's something that we would still pursue. Uh, that park is in some need of rehab, but we've done a great job of making sure with our ARBA funding. That we've gone through and revitalized many of the city parks. Uh, this is just one on that list. Uh, unfortunately with ARBA funding, uh, being expended for the most part at this point, uh, we do have to explore other avenues. So I appreciate that you're diving right into it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byder. Any comments or questions from members of council on the, on the resolution? Um, Mayor Slaughter, remind me, uh, we're going through that Parks Plan Grant, that planning grant right now. Where's that at? Remind me one more anticipated to have that.
Sure, that's, uh, throughout this year, we had the initial kickoff meeting in February and another one is coming up. Uh, I want to say here in April, there's going to be five or six stakeholder meetings. They'll come out with that schedule. Um, so it's about a twelve month process. So by the end of this year, very early twenty twenty five, they should have that, uh, the full comp plan.
Nice.
Comprehensive plan completed. DCNR obviously is part of that. And so, um, as they've been saying all along. Continue to do the projects that we're doing. DCNR, this is obviously a DCNR grant. And so DCNR, um. Actually was the one that recommended to land in Water Conservation Fund to continue to do the park upgrades in conjunction with the comprehensive plan update. So as soon as I know the next meeting, I think Liz is the councilwoman, Millie is the rep, uh, keep, but I'll keep all of you posted.
Yeah, and I meant to talk to her tonight, but she wasn't going to make it. So it just triggered my mind.
Yeah, that was just the kickoff meeting, but we do have the meat of it coming up here over the next three to five months probably. So. And that'll be stakeholder meetings all across the city with everyone. So, which obviously will be very public.
Yeah, no, no, certainly. Yeah. Um, no, that's awesome. I'm excited to see what comes out of that. That's good stuff. Thank you. Um. Another question, uh, Mr. Mackey.
Has there, uh, been any discussion on rest facilities, uh, with any of this money? I mean, is there, is there water service to that park? I don't remember.
I don't think so. We have not talked about resting facilities with, with Youngs. We could, we could talk to see, I could ask the, um, I could ask Bill Scott to see if, or Scott Livermore, if there's water out there. I don't.
I'm just trying to determine if there's something maybe in that list that we could do without that rest facilities might be a better, I just, again, we've talked about this in the past. I. I feel like rest facilities at all of our parks are something that we really need to start looking at.
And this, because this project is, has to be at least six hundred thousand, right? So it's minimum six hundred thousand. So, yeah, I think we could probably. In addition to, you know, add that in.
But I know there's probably got to be options for rest facilities that don't need water lines run to them. So, I don't know.
So we can, we can add it. Yeah, we can add that to the scope. Yeah.
Great, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, here you can see none. Uh, Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
And yes, uh, motion passes five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll move to item six, resolution, um, by municipalities certifying provision of local match for state operating financial assistance. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Wright, welcome, sir.
Good evening. Hi, uh, yes, this is the resolution by municipality certifying provision of local match for state operating financial assistance. This is an annual resolution, uh, that certifies the city of Williamsport's contribution towards River Valley Transit Authority's annual state section fifteen thirteen operating subsidy. Um, our FY twenty four allocation is just north of five point eight million, uh, which is a six percent increase over our FY twenty three allocation. Um, the local match total contribution is four hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars, uh, which went up five percent. Uh, over FY twenty three, the city's contribution that we, we calculate these based on scheduled, uh, revenue miles. Um, is two hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and two cents. Um, we have commitment from Lycoming County. And we also collect from nine other municipalities for the remainder of the amount.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Um, this was also reviewed in finance, I believe, Mr. Byder.
It was, um, again, this is something that we've done in the past. Uh, the only question that I had at the time was making sure that other municipalities were aware. As to what this local match was contributing towards for them, for them to receive, um, bus services from River Valley Transit Authority. Uh, and we've had all other municipalities, uh, come on board with that. And then, uh, Councilwoman Katz had brought up, um, the. Like coming mall where we had previously had service but never collected a match in the past. Obviously that was well before your time there. Uh, and that's something that we were unable to do.
Yeah, that, that would fall under, um, you know, an Oregon, a route guarantee, um, as opposed to, um. Local match, but you know, with the change in ownership and everything and not fan fest, but we're there before then. Um, but, uh, something we have done with, with our. Um, advertising whatnot, our, um. Non-subsidy operating revenue where we've been doing very well and exceeding the expectation and budget for where that falls in place.
And you're referring to the bus wraps at that point.
The bus wraps and shelter, um, we've been using a company and they've done very well for us.
Good.
And that was all from us. And the, um, Mrs. Gats.
It's, it's interesting to see a right name up turn agenda after all these years. I know you don't want to do that. Um, the question I have is. Uh, at one point several years ago, you were going to go after Alak Haven. And for a bush route up there, has that been dropped completely or is it still in the progress of anything?
We did the, uh, technical assistance grant. The, um. The route didn't, uh, perform as well as wanted to be expected. So PennDOT, um, discontinued that for, for full service. Um, my predecessor put it in place for a couple of days a week, Friday and Saturday. What we're seeing is not so much people riding in Clinton County. It's people from Williamsport that want to visit the Super Walmart in Lock Haven of all things. Um. Whether or not we continue, I'd be looking at next fiscal years is considering whether or not that we continue to provide that.
Who applies for this? Just a certain, would say Walmart, would they apply for this or how does that work?
It would fall to, uh, either the city of Lock Haven or Clinton County if they would like to see some sort of service. I know step is running dedicated stop service in Clinton County. And even from what I've been told at PennDOT, um. There's seen some, some utilization, but not what would be, you know, something, something that wouldn't garner fixed route service.
Okay, just curious because I know it was brought up before to do that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, here you can see none. Uh, Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
And yes, uh, motion passes five zero. Todd, thank you very much. Uh, we'll move to item seven, resolution of the city of Williamsport City Council authorizing evaluation of components of structures at fifteen hundred West Third Street in Williamsport. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mayor Slaughter, welcome.
Yes, good evening, President Yoder, Vice President Byder, members of council administration. Uh, what you have for you, as you said, is resolution, uh, authorizing the valuation of various components of the structures at fifteen hundred. Uh, West Third Street, which was part of just, uh, understanding the amount of money that was placed into those structures and, um, any of the, uh, federal portion. Uh, that's left there that we could possibly, uh, still owe. So we want to get an idea of what that number is, uh, and look at options from there.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Slaughter. This did not go to a committee. I'll just kind of add a little bit of context here, um, because seven, eight, nine are all kind of interrelated here. Um, I think most everybody's kind of aware of, um, the past couple of years, we've gone through a process to begin. Transitioning, um, RVTA into an authority. They're formerly a creative authority, what, a year and a half ago? Almost two years ago, um, and as that process continues, um, this is another component of kind of that decoupled. Um, is kind of going through the assets that, um, are utilized by RVTA that have, um. Transit funding in them, um, and trying to align them and get them in the hands of, um, the appropriate stakeholders. Okay. Um, so with one fifteen hundred West Third Street, that's the Public Works Building, right? Um, and so, uh, part of what we're hoping to do here is, um, to the mayor's point. Um, getting a clear idea of, of what's left in, in federal state transit, um. Uh, interest and kind of seeing what our options are as far as what makes the most sense to, I think, uh, explore that staying in the city's hands, right? Um, so it's, uh, not to exceed ninety-five hundred dollars. It's essentially an appraisal, right? Um, so nothing super crazy there. Um, a little bit of additional context, especially as we go into items eight and nine. Um, any comments or questions for members? On the item. All right, um, here you see none. Uh, we'll call the vote. Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
No.
Uh, Mr. Byder.
Yes.
And yes, for me, motion passes four to one. Uh, we'll move to item eight, uh, resolution for the city of Williamsport lease. Real property from RVTA located at one hundred West Third Street, one forty-four West Third Street, one twenty-seven, plus Fourth Street and eleven, eleven. West Church Street, all in Williamsport. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mayor Slaughter.
Yes, good evening once again, uh, President Yoder, Vice President Byder, members of council administration. Uh, this resolution, as you said, sort of goes hand in hand with item nine. Um, if, you know, transfer of the property. Uh, then the portions that the city is utilizing, the lease agreements would need to be, some would need to be updated, um, others put in place. So. We'd be updating those lease agreements. That's what this resolution, uh, for the lease of real property from RVTA, as you mentioned, indicated authority, transfer the properties, update the lease agreement. So that's where we are.
Uh, absolutely. Um, and again, this did not also go to a committee. Um, I, I'm actually going to throw an idea out here. Um, I, I think. It'd be, be a good idea to table this one, um, and, and also number nine. Um. Uh, you know, both of these are things that we, we need to do, and I think generally want to do, um. That they are pretty complicated items. Um, and even as of yesterday, there were a couple of things that popped up that. Whether it's language, et cetera, that I think we need a couple more weeks to kind of go through. Um, so. I think tabling is a, is a good idea. Keeps it in front of us. Um, and I think. I think we've got pretty much everything now, but I think it would be prudent to take a couple of extra weeks to just kind of ensure we've got all the details hashed out, that ensure that this goes as smooth as possible. Okay, um, I'll, I'll make that motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Um, any comments or questions on the motion to table? All right, uh, here you see none. Um, on the motion to table, Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Um, and yes, motion to table passes five zero. Um, and we'll move to item nine. A resolution to transfer real property to River Valley Transit Authority is their motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Mayor Slaughter.
Yes, good evening once again, uh, President Yoder, Vice President Byder, members of council administration. Uh, as I mentioned in the previous item, previous item. Uh, this is resolution to transfer the real property, uh, to the authority, to River Valley Transit Authority. Um, as they created authority and now the items, the transit assets gets transferred.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Slaughter. Um, a- as I kind of referenced, um, in item eight, um, item nine as well, this reflects, um, actually, um. Transferring property to RVTA that they predominantly, um, operate out of. Um, and in line with item eight, you know, I think there's just a couple of little things that have popped up related to, you know. Um, and in line with item eight, you know, I think there's just a couple of little things that have popped up related to, you know, what happens to them down the road under particular circumstances, um, that I think we are still kind of flushing out. Um, so I, I, you know, I fully expect, um, we'll, we'll transition this. Um, I think we just need a couple more weeks to kind of flush out some final details on that. Um, so I'll, I'll make the motion to table item nine as well. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Um, any, uh, comments, questions, discussion related to tabling? Mr. Byder?
One thing that I do want to stress about all of this is simply that with this transfer of property, Elm Park is included in those parcels for the public's interest. So they're aware, um, the city is making sure that that particular portion of property is parceled off. That is all part of what the discussion is that we're trying to have, uh, with legal counsel and make sure that that is done correctly, uh, which is why we're not taking action on this tonight and voting to table. Um, also, when we go back up to item number seven, uh, authorizing the, um, evaluation components, that is part of that as well. We'd like to make sure that we get this information back from the evaluation company, so we know exactly what we're getting into, um, hopefully to keep our hands and retain, um, the streets and parks building specifically. And then again, have that parcel piece of Elm Park.
Well said. Absolutely. Um, any other comments, items of discussion related to the motion to table? All right, hearing and seeing none, uh, call the roll, Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Byder?
Yes.
And yes, that's a five zero, um, vote on the motion to table. Uh, move to item 10, except for filing, we have the Finance Committee meeting minutes from August 29th and September 26, 2023. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions related to the minutes? Hearing seeing none, I'll call the roll, Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Byder?
Yes.
And yes, uh, motion passes five zero. Item 18 announcements, uh, I'll quickly announce, we had an executive section last Tuesday, the 19th, uh, related to matters of real estate. Um, up, uh, upcoming meeting or our next Ray Lou Central City Council meeting, excuse me, will be on Thursday, April 11th, 7, 7:00 PM, um, not 7:30, right here at Trade and Transit Two. Upcoming meetings, um, City Hall is closed tomorrow, Friday, March 29th for Good Friday. Um, wish everybody a happy, um, Easter for, for all of those that celebrate. Monday, April 1st, 12:00 PM Planning Commission. Tuesday, April 9th, 11:30 AM is Public Safety. 1:00 PM Finance Committee, 2:30 PM Public Works. Wednesday, April 10th, 9:00 AM is Economic Revitalization. Thursday, April 11th, at 7:00 PM is our next City Council meeting. Are there any comments from members of City Council? Going into the Easter. Any comments from members of the administration? Mr. Art Mitten, Mayor Slaughter?
Just that, uh, the egg hunt is rescheduled for this Saturday at Brandon Park from 1 to 4. So hopefully, fingers crossed, the weather holds off. I know it's iffy at the moment. It's going back and forth, but egg hunt Saturday.
Um, if you, i- if you have to call it, will you try to do it like the following weekend? You'll, you'll still try to do it again?
I'm gonna try and get it.
Okay. Gotcha. Uh, hopefully the weather, um, holds. It's a good event. Um, my two and a half year old enjoys going every year. For sure. So, um, thank you, Mayor Slaughter. Any other comments?
Actually, I did have one thing. I, I apologize, but there was something, seeing as how, uh, Mr. Livermore is not here.
Hmm.
I, I, I know this only because I texted him to ask myself. So I have it here in front of me, but I wanted to let everybody know that spring cleanup through streets and parks begins April 15th and ends on May 10th. So I've actually gotten quite a few texts already and, and people asking me about it.
You said April 19th?
April 15th.
15th.
Yep, and ends May 10th. So.
Awesome.
Those are the dates. Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you.
No, absolutely. Thank you. Any other comments from the administration? Any comments from the public? Any comments, questions, clarifications from our, our friend at WVIA, the news media? Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah. You're welcome to, uh, any comments, questions, clarifications, you're, you're welcome to. I don't know how this is going to go. We never get one of these, so this will be interesting.
All right. Yeah, I'm Chase with WVIA. It's nice to meet all you. First time I didn't get to meet John yet, so I'm sorry about that, but nice to meet you. Um, so yeah, I'm new covering Lycoming County. So a couple of the questions I might have are a little bit redundant, probably what council was probably already talked about re- recently. Um, but basically, uh, I'm working on something on the current housing issue in Lycoming County in Williamsport. And I'm aware of county, uh, the county today, uh, approved the Oak Family Grant, which is going to help begin to like 125 homes in Wolf Township. Um, I'm also met with Jason Fink for the Chamber of Commerce, who's kind of enlightened me on a lot of the issues that Lycoming County has with quality housing, um, as well as kind of the depreciation of population, uh, which is about a, about one, negative 1.3% uh, since 2020. Uh, so a lot of factors that kind of go hand in hand. Uh, my question for council and the mayor, if he's able, um, is what has Williamsport City kind of been doing to help with the housing? Uh, any initiatives, uh, funding plans in the works?
Want to go, you go for it.
Just going to put me on the spot. Um, yeah, so.
Sorry. He said, but he said, so I was like.
That's good. Yeah, that's all good. Um, so yeah, we do have some housing things that are out there. Um, City Council actually has allocated a million dollars to our land bank and our redevelopment authority, both. Um, the RDA actually took action yesterday on a house, so we're, we're doing, um, a few, a few things simultaneously. So one of them, um, is to try to address some blighted properties through our Blighted Property Commission and the RDA. So we're doing, um, a lot on that front right now. The RDA is going to really be pedal to the metal the next, uh, couple of months particularly, uh, to acquire initially some of the worst of the worst homes that have been out there for many, many years. Uh, Skip in our community development department is working on that as well. Um, so you'll see that. Um, there's some housing that's going up, that's up by the high school that again, the council supported, uh, administration partly, uh, with some ARPA funds with that. Um, I'm blanking on the actual name of the, I know it's T. Ross, Mysteria Lane, but it was T. Ross Brothers and some other folks.
Yep.
Um, so we have that. There's one in Newberry that actually went to the zoning hearing board, went over to the courts and now back to the zoning hearing board. Uh, so, uh, that's a, a town home project that, that could be going. Uh, we have obviously over here, um, the old YMCA, which is moving along. It should be finishing up soon. Um, as you know, Williamsport, many third-class cities are landlocked, so, um, as we look at, um, and we had this discussion yesterday in RDA, sort of a targeted approach, if there's an area, um, where we can sort of target, uh, if there's a number of blighted or and or, uh, homes that are able to be rehabbed, just start to look at that and do sort of a heat map. Um, so, uh, we are looking at, I mean, housing, housing, housing is what everyone talks about right throughout the whole country. Um, and having a menu of housing, so not just from affordable to workforce housing and to the upper echelon, uh, upper, middle and, uh, higher-end housing. So, um, that's what most cities, and again, I was at PML this morning, uh, that's very municipal league and housing came up. So, um, it's everywhere. We're all trying to work on it, uh, and what we can do, as much as we can do, uh, to get, um, and a lot of times when you say affordable housing, people think low income, but affordable housing for people that are working, workforce housing, people that can afford a house. Because in a traditional sense, we think, you know, if you have a job, you can get a house, but we know particularly the last few years with inflation and such, that's not always the case. And, uh, Bethlehem's mayor gave an example of, you know, people are in the shelter, taking the bus to work, but they're working. Uh, so, you know, we gotta, that's what we're working on. That's what, you know, across the country we're working on. So, um, I think hopefully we'll see some new housing. We'll see some new housing stock coming in and some rehabbed housings and, uh, RDA, we had a conversation about the ones that are so bad, we just demo them, get a blank parcel and hopefully sell the parcel to new single-family homes.
Thank you, Mayor. And I actually noticed, um, when I did research through the census, uh, primary, a lot of the houses in Williamsport area were built before 1939. A majority of them were about like 3,000 or more.
So one, one other thing that the mayor, uh, forgot to mention, uh, amongst the plethora of things that he did, uh, was not just the city, but also the county, um, um, first community foundation, as well as, uh, the, um, Chamber of Commerce, making a significant investment with, uh, an organization called Arc Terrace. Um, one of the primary goals that we have set forward for them is market rate housing.
Yeah.
Um, they will be investing in the, uh, federal opportunity zones, all three of which are located in the City of Williamsport, most notably, um, over in East End where we have our old city project as well. Um, that was a plan for townhomes, um, that since has changed a little bit, phase two maybe coming before phase one. Uh, but that's a $5 million investment that the organizations themselves are going to be making, which then will be leveraged, uh, with another $20 million from Arc Terrace. Uh, and that is a, uh, 10-year timetable, uh, that they have then to invest in those properties, uh, given the laws that are, um, that come with the, uh, federal opportunity zones.
Okay. And is Arc Terrace, they're, they're local then with the chamber?
Uh, they are not local with the chamber. They are an outside organization that, um,
I think they're from Boston, uh,
New England area, New England, Boston.
Yeah, I think, uh, Jason mentioned that before when I met with him, but.
Yeah, and that, that's been, that's been about a year that we've been working with ourselves, the county and the other two organizations. Uh, they've had a lot of success in the city of Baltimore, uh, in Lima, Ohio, and also Erie, Pennsylvania, um, where significant investments such as the 25 million have been leveraged and has rolled into, I believe it's over $80 million in the city of Erie, uh, which has helped revitalize their downtown.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you as well for coming.
Of course. Um, I just have one more question. Uh, and it's regarding the, and I'm sure you guys probably mentioned it recently and a lot of people were talking about it, uh, considering the phase was just approved by the county, but the Saskatchewan River Walk. Uh, I was hoping to maybe get some comments about how you guys kind of feel is going to help the city, um, tourism, all sorts of stuff.
You're talking about the extension.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, and Bill's been reviewing, Bill Scott's our city engineer has been reviewing that. Yes, we've been working hand in hand with the county on that, the right of ways and all that. As they work through the extension, the planning, uh, it's going to be great. I mean, our River Walk is fantastic and as it continues to make its way to the west and, you know, the rails, the trails and everything that's out there, Pine Creek and all of that. So we're very excited about it and, uh, we're looking forward to that uh, project and to that, you know, being completed and extending the River Walk. Uh, I think everybody really enjoys that. Uh, and as was mentioned earlier, with all the recreation things that we're doing, and we saw during the pandemic that people love outdoor recreation. We have a lot of it here. Uh, and then it attracts people, uh, into our city and in downtown to the restaurants and things as well and our hotels. So, um, if we can continue to, uh, you know, do these types of projects and get folks here, uh, enjoying what we have to offer. I think this just, you know, helps all of us. So we're, I'm excited about it and looking forward to that expansion. And I'm sure council is, and just to plug one other thing real quick, that councilwoman Mealy probably would if she was here. Um, the first time home buyers program, speaking of housing, we did two this year, right Skip? We've done two already. We do have a first time home buyers program through our community development office. Um, so we encourage folks to take advantage of that as well.
Um, and can you can explain like the benefits with that?
Uh, there's a lot. It's, um, so you, it's gives you a, uh, like a lower, you don't have to have as much capital, for example. So like you can come in, but there's benefits. They can reach out to community development to take advantage of that. So there are some requirements around it, uh, load of mod, things of that nature, load of moderate. So there are some requirements, but it's a good thing, but not to jump back, but so I'll let them go for the River Walk, but we're excited about that.
All right. Awesome. That's all the questions I have. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Um, no other members from the media, take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Have a wonderful Easter, everyone.